We're live.
In case there's any questions. I'd like to open the Deerfield Planning Board meeting, September 16th, at just past seven o'clock in the evening. And our agenda tonight is look at minutes of previous meetings, review mail, take any short public comment. And then we have some new business. It's an A and R at 71 Hillside Road. Then we have some old business involving 198 Mill Village Road or Sunmass Inc. Then we want to talk about potential changes to our zoning bylaws. Then we're going to have a discussion about how our very own planning board functions, member responsibilities, participation, internal communication, general operations, assistance and funding. And any other business not reasonably anticipated, 48 hours prior to the posting of this meeting. We'll set a date for the next meeting and we'll adjourn. Any changes, additions? I would like to change, just switch seven and eight, just to have the discussion of our function prior to our discussion of zoning bylaws because I think it will lead into that. Otherwise. And before we get going, I think we'd like to do a little introduction. The town has a new employee. So, Mike, you want to introduce yourself and tell us what your position is?
Yes, I'm Michael Pinsky. I'm your new Assistant Town Administrator. I've worked and lived in Philadelphia area for about 20 years in local government management and recently relocated back. I was born and raised in North Hampton, have deep roots in Hatfield, Deerfield, in this Pioneer River Valley community. So, it's great to be back. I'm honored to work for the town of Deerfield and I hope I can provide you guys assistance. I have pretty good experience with planning and zoning and land use and things like that down in New Jersey and Pennsylvania where I worked before. Getting used to the jargon and laws up here will take me a little bit of time, but I'm confident I can do that for you. And hopefully you can lean on me for support, which hopefully is what you're needing right now.
Oh, we need support.
Right.
So, this is the item that actually will, when we get to discussion of planning board functions, we'll get more with Mike and Diana are here to talk more about that. But just to remind people that that was, this position, we wanted to make sure that's part of the job description was some support for the planning board. And I think zoning board too. And so, we'll talk about how that's going to get structured, I guess.
Have you been fired continually?
I have not.
Why?
Have you?
Why weren't we a part of it? At least you.
Part of?
Finding, meeting Mike and interviewing Mike and...
He's not really a...
He's not really our person.
Well...
I'm, yeah, I'm, so, I went through an interview process for the select board hiring a township administrator.
So, his title is Assistant Administrator?
Right.
Right? And just some of his duties, like it was back when we had a larger staff here, they always supplied some services to us.
But he'll be a different person that will actually do that, taking Priscilla's place, right?
Right.
Exactly. Yeah, we could talk about that.
He's not going to be...
Right.
Right, but I just thought if he was going to be helping us, then we should have had some input in who got hired. That's all.
Yeah.
The select board hired him, so he works for the select board.
And as we said...
And I'm here to help.
Provide support to the...
Right, but I'm just saying, we had zero input.
I don't think we've got any. I know I was involved in the job description. I was, we were asked, I think we all were asked to put some input into that, so...
Yeah. I guess he's curious of fate.
Yeah.
But he'd be part of that.
So, let's also go down and introduce ourselves as six out of the seven planning board members here tonight. So, you want to just say who you are since?
Anne Mary Cludier.
Rachel Blain.
John Waite.
Paul Ellis.
Roger Sodowsky.
Max Vittis.
And this is one of the places we fall down without support staff from the administration. We need a name tag for Anne Mary, but eventually...
You should probably turn this around so people know.
Well, I mean, you know, kind of like with, I want sympathy with her that we don't have...
Right, in solidarity.
I thought it was on both sides, okay. All right, let's try an A and R. Actually, is there anybody who want to say something or ask a question briefly that's about something that's not on the agenda? Any kind of public comment? All right, so let's look at an A and R at 71 Hillside Road. Is there someone here to talk about that? You want to come up to this? You want to come on up to the table and I'll pull out...
Here, I got this. Watch.
I'm looking for the, that's what I'm looking for. Anne Mary, you have the thing. You can read it if you want, but... So, we have an A and R application. Applicants Ronald and Marilyn Hebert and 71 Hillside Road. And what they're asking, the plan shows survey of 17 acres plus or minus with two smaller parcels to be conveyed to a butters. They're not building lots and the remaining 15 or so acres stays with the house at number 71. Is this it?
Yeah.
So, let's pass around a few.
Can I see that, John?
Yep. So, Hillside Road is the frontage?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
While you're reviewing it, if you didn't have it in advance, I had a chance to look at it.
Okay.
So, I can provide some comments. It appears that the owner of the 17 acre lot is allocating land to the budding residents.
That's right.
And you can please fill me in on this, but it looks like in a preparation to make things that weren't conforming conform to the...
That's correct. Our attorney advised us to have a boundary survey done.
Right.
Because we hadn't had one done for many years.
We've owned the land for 40 years.
So, as, this was Mary Ann Delasky in Greenfield, and as she started out and was marking things off, neighbors suddenly came out and realized they were encroaching on our property. The smallest piece houses a fairly permanent shed. And the larger piece that goes by the horse barn was cleared. Just not moved and unfortunately we got a lot of their horse manure. So, in both cases, in both cases, the butters were mortified and also willing to go ahead and purchase their little bits. Well, that's basically the story for that.
That's a great story.
It's pretty much a lot line adjustment to an existing lot, giving conformity to what was a non-conforming use. There was encroachments of a shed and I think the barn in the back on the other lot doesn't meet the setback which we required if they ever sold it. So, it would be a pre-existing non-conform use. However, to make all the lots conforming, the adjustments are made to the lot lines. The three lots now will conform to the zoning in that zone agricultural residential. They all have frontage and there's really no new building envelope that would be established.
So, there's a dashed, there's a dashed line right down here on the right side?
That's proposed, yep.
And one going up there?
So, those are the two proposed lines?
Yep.
Okay.
And this is in...
Yes, they're quite close to one another.
And this is in RA Residential Agriculture or CB?
No, it's Agriculture, Residential Agriculture.
RA, it's RA.
So, the frontage is already not...
Yes. There's no longer, that area, that 17 acres is non-developable because there's no access to it. And it's low, so...
So, are you the one that lives at 71?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
But, John, those lots could have been developed before the currents.
Right, this isn't affecting that at all.
Yeah, well, you were saying they're not conforming, but they probably were conforming at one time.
So, it's a pre-existing...
Right. The frontage is remaining same.
Back before you straightened things out.
Not before I straightened them out.
So, your property, how do you get the 200 feet there if you're trying to change it?
He doesn't.
We're not trying to change it.
Okay.
They have 150 more and they're going to keep 150.
Okay.
So, it's really just the back lots. And I don't understand what's non-conforming about them.
This one here?
The encroachments actually, so the shed that you see that's in the little triangle, that's on their land?
Okay.
And they're deciding to sell it to them so that they don't have to tear it down?
Well, yes, in this case, the gal wants to sell her property and her home, which when the bank sees that, they're going to take exception to that.
Exactly, exactly. So, and the other one, and I'm not sure about the barn, but it appears that that would not meet the setback requirements for that large of a structure.
We didn't discuss that.
Okay.
Oh, so the properties aren't going with this?
Yeah, this barn, this barn looks like it would be setting back enough just from a rough measurement here.
Like a small corral there.
Okay.
Yeah, they need more room for their horses.
That's what we were...
So, this section on the right side is the only piece that's being, the little pie slice and this big piece out the back?
It's about two acres altogether.
Yeah. And so, that has no connection with the front pieces?
None, none whatsoever.
So, there's nothing built on this 1.846 acres here?
Oh, no, no. It's open ground.
Open, well, more open than it used to be. It used to be all trees.
Mm-hmm.
So, all we're doing is saying that you can make those two lots. We're not, then those other property owners after they buy have to come back and take away that property lines if they want.
Yeah.
When they sell.
When they, whenever they do their transaction.
Yeah, so the approval, approval not required, I'm still new to this, but I would ask that the board put a condition on a decision that the record plan be filed with the new adjusted lot lines and that we get a copy of it, that the file is complete.
That seems reasonable, of course.
Well, that's...
Well, that's...
I think I understand it. Does that happen anyway?
That would be up to you guys to file it, though. We can't...
Yes, exactly.
Just so that we get receipt that the record plan is filed.
Right.
So that we can establish the new lot lines in our GIS system.
I think it's to their benefit, not, it doesn't matter to the town.
It's typical that's happened whenever we have a...
Yeah, that's part of the process.
They're probably going to do it, otherwise they wouldn't have come to us.
If you... Okay, yeah, and I'm sorry if I don't know the correct procedure, but...
No. When you get the A and R plan signed from here, then you take it and take care of it and you get it done.
Yes.
We don't have to ask you to prove that you did it. We don't need that at all.
But if you wish to have the amended plan, we certainly would...
It would be helpful for us, just for internal purposes, so that we have a record of the new lots.
The new lot.
For our GIS.
How does the, how does the, they back office there, how do they get it?
See, I guess it doesn't because we sign off on it, but we actually don't know if they take it to the courthouse or not.
Yeah.
That is an interesting...
But somehow the tax, somehow the tax records will change. I don't, they always do, I don't know.
Well, you drop a copy off to the town clerk and...
We drop a copy of this, but not the one, does the court, when they approve it, do they let us know it's official now? Because until the court does...
Yeah, they, when they file it with the county assessor, then that gets recorded here, but...
Say the assessor's...
Just so we have a local, a local copy of it.
We would know that there was a problem with that.
I think, because most people just still do it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Let it, does, it's what we look at, which is frontage and...
July 26, 2019.
It's not changing much.
And who is Gene Baptiste?
My son, who actually owns the property.
I see, so you're here representing him?
Yes, we filed the application, so...
Okay.
That's a historic name, Baptiste.
So, they're filing then?
Who also owns all this too, so, I don't know.
Do you sign?
So, do you own 71 as well, or does your son own it?
He owns the whole package now.
He owns all the property.
Yeah, says it is the owner.
The back lot, back acreage and two front, three front lots.
And two property, all the frontage is his now, it's his home, a rental property in our home.
And he signed the, he signed the application as the owner or?
Oh, okay, good.
Someone, someone did.
Yeah, we got to sign.
All right, do we have a motion to endorse?
I am moved that we endorse the A and R for 71 Hillside Road.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain? 6-0-0.
16-9.
9-16-19. Did you see the disc that came with it? Did you do a digital?
Oh, there was a disc with it, oh, yes.
Was it with the...
It was with the package.
Anything's talking?
All right, here, try and sign these and I'll bring them down too.
You want them all signed? Yeah, there's only four and they need one and we need the...
Yeah, not a problem.
So, I'll make a note to, I think shall we get the digital? I don't see it in there.
I gave it to Priscilla.
I did not.
I know, just signed through all mine.
We want to give them the mylar and one property, we want to give the other two assessors in.
Yeah, you can give them to them and they'll keep the other ones, that's what John just said.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Did everybody else get?
I guess fold it since it's, actually, it's better. So, if you give them the...
Yes, we did, yes.
All right, thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, nice to meet you. Your new post? Yeah, good luck, thank you.
See you tomorrow, Marilyn. See you tomorrow. I changed, I'm not coming anymore. Hello.
I think I mean you go. We didn't do the minutes, let's just quickly go back and look at the minutes on August 5th. They might recame to the next item actually, so...
Here, I'll just pass them down and put it all together.
Yep. There you go.
So, we have an August 5th minute?
These are August the 5th, yeah.
I wasn't at this one.
Are we not? Oh, yeah, we weren't online, so you had to take care of it.
What's that again?
I was not, I was not there.
Rachel was not there, there's only four of us.
I wasn't there either. Yeah, got you and Anne Mary off there. Rachel is, I'll move Rachel down to the, okay, gotcha, okay.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Okay. Wait a minute, that was, no, that, no, that's...
I don't remember, sir.
Yeah, I think that shouldn't be there.
I said that we did not approve any minutes.
Yeah, I think that comes out, that's...
That was the previous. The second sentence from the bottom, did Max, is that accurate?
No, my point was we were hiring attorneys from inside 128.
That's right, you were more about why not more local?
Why not local attorneys?
Sight and toons, anything, so, see the end of that sentence, Paul?
Boston Brown.
I'm sorry, so that this, that's what I had written down in my notes.
I know, but I think it was wrong.
If that's wrong, I'll take it out.
Yes, why don't we use local attorneys? Because currently most of our attorneys are from out east.
Right, and they're skewing everything?
No, they, is that not skewing?
Okay, all right.
We're paying them to drive on Route 2.
Okay, so cross out from where to where?
Four miles an hour.
So, Rachel, the local attorney?
Yeah, I...
Yeah, we have.
There's a few other attorneys.
We have, I'll take that out.
Currently, most of the attorneys we use are from far away.
Okay.
Maybe we just, that was...
All right, okay.
So, you can put from far away.
I mean, it's good because they probably know more about what's...
From far away?
Well, I think, but it's a question raised, which is...
No.
Okay, all right.
It's like, why do we always use Sampson and Weston? They're based in inside 128. I think that's a great point.
Well, we use...
Of course he knows.
Oh, right.
If they weren't, you know, on the other side, whatever it's called. All right, so that, and just quickly, because I was going to go through the stuff, but how, the storage, the propane storage, what size are you planning to go to?
And I was confused...
This is just the correct minutes.
Oh, the proposed plan has two 30,000 gallon tanks, so for a total of 60,000 gallons of storage.
And how much was the original?
2,000.
2,000.
In your original plant?
I think so.
Because that's our minutes, say you're going from 2,000 to 60,000.
No, 30,000.
Well, 2, 30,000.
Two, right, two, half, 60,000.
Wait, 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 where is it?
There were multiple iterations as the mechanical designers came to terms with the fact that that gas moratorium is real and then we were going to heat entirely with the propane and then the implications of an outage in service.
Oh, you mean it's supposed to be 60?
Yeah, propane storage is...
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
And the engineers always want it more and more and more fail-safe.
30,000 gallons.
All right, good, I understand what you're saying.
So, if I could interrupt for my edification, please. Could you introduce yourself?
No, no, we haven't started this yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Correcting the minutes from last time when I was here. I got it, I'm just correcting the minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. All right, so with those, one, two, three, four edits, are we good with the minutes from the last meeting?
I also adjusted it, just so you know, it, the actual minutes said to be either the third or the 10th, and so I changed it to what's actually tonight just because of that.
I like that.
Okay, so...
Okay, well, it wasn't right.
Just cut, just cut out the garbage and go to the, whatever, cut to the facts.
So, the three of us were here, so we should, we should vote. You good with the minutes?
Well, you striking the last sentence?
Yeah, you change that to...
Just, why don't we use local attorneys?
Yeah, currently, most of the attorneys are from far away, why don't we use local ones?
Okay.
Because we're probably paying for a stay, red roof.
Uh-huh.
Driving back and forth, three hours each way.
All bowing in. All right, so I, we accept the minutes as with those edits.
Okay, so you making a motion, John?
Yeah.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose abstain.
Abstain, one, two, three.
So, we got a...
So, it's 3-0-3.
Nice. All right, next old business, 198 Mill Village Road, Sunmass Inc. site plan revision. So, I just want to say, because we were just here, that the last meeting, you came to just present a potential plan and then we had, we had made a motion to hold a public hearing on a stormwater portion that might coincide with the select board's public hearing on the new propane storage, the date to be determined. So, we have not done any action on that.
Correct, and with good reason. Chris Chamberlain from Berkshire Design Group in North Hampton, representing Sunmass Inc. My intention was to have plans into you within two weeks after that meeting. We ended up in a little bit of back and forth with the fire chief regarding a couple of items that impacted the site plan that relate to those propane tanks. And so, the last thing that I wanted to do was to show up with plans that were knowingly out of date, so we didn't get those plans into you until last week. They've also gone to the peer reviewer, which was, I got a message from Weston and Sampson saying that Kip had reached out to them, letting them know that we would be submitting new plans and that the intention was to have the peer reviewer look them over. So, now those plans are in, they're with the peer reviewer. I believe he was going to reach out to someone at the planning board to just make sure that they had direction to pursue that review and then this will lead up to the public hearing to revise the stormwater permit, is my understanding.
And then you normally get an estimate of what it would be, right?
Typically.
The cost of the peer review.
I can assure you that we'll gladly pay for the peer review, whatever's necessary to verify the plan, but that's one reason why I'm here today, even though we don't have a public hearing yet, is to make sure that all of those i's get dotted and t's gets crossed.
And the reason why we just reached out directly to Weston and Sampson, because they had done the previous peer review, so instead of putting this out to bid, bringing in a whole new one, we felt it was fair and, you know, expedient to do that, so that's why we did that. So, we should ask them for an estimate, they can't do that until they see this, so now they're probably in a position to give you an estimate and...
I believe so.
And then we could ask for a deposit from you guys and move ahead.
Correct. And in terms of that select board process, which again is the...
So, just to, so on that one, I, so I haven't, I haven't been notified and unfortunately Kip's not here, so he might have been the one talking about this, but it sounds very straightforward. So, have you been involved in this at all, Mike?
No, so I would ask that...
No, so I would ask that, if you could explain to me the peer review process, it's my understanding that it doesn't happen until the estimate's provided, right?
Normally.
Normally, and in this case, it's an ongoing...
It's a revision, right.
It's a revision to a plan, and Weston and Sampson's familiar with it, so that makes sense, that they'd be the peer reviewer, and that they're not gonna substantially increase their costs that would cause the applicant any undue hardship, so that's my understanding.
All right, so, but the town, we did get the plans prior to...
We received plans on September, last Friday?
Thursday, Friday.
November 12th it stamped, so that's good.
So Thursday they came in, we stamped them in, and the, putting this on your agenda is not to have a hearing tonight.
Right.
But just to get you familiar with what the revisions are, and Chris can...
Well, I think, I think that what actually happened is that we thought, find out what the selectmen are doing with their propane tanks, and see if we couldn't put them together. We've already voted to have a public hearing for the stormwater, and we're hoping that it would be made it up with the select board, so.
Okay, but this is a revised plan, right, newly revised, I think, comparing the plan that I saw originally and the one that came in, there's some substantial changes to the site. There's a building that's being demolished as we speak.
So we, we had a presentation last month.
Okay.
So we were kind of up on that one, I think.
Okay.
Right, in advance of submitting the plans, we did show up on the agenda last month just to give an overview of what those plans would be, and give some direction on what the process would be from there.
Okay, thank you, yep.
All right, so then you did say you wanted to say about this select board and the propane.
Right, so in order to install the propane tanks, the first step is to apply for what's called a land license through the select board, which essentially, I don't know all the particulars, the legal basis, but it essentially designates that this piece of land is allowed to have storage of propane, which then leads into an application process through the state fire marshal's office as to the detailed design of that plan, but the select board does require a public hearing in order to review that application. That application requires a signature from the fire chief, which I got about two hours ago, so I'll be back here in the morning to submit that and get that process going as well. We're certainly happy to go and attend one joint public hearing, if that's a more efficient for everybody, but we'll be back twice if we need to be.
I have a question, Chris.
Yes.
So if it's a 500 gallon tank or just a residential, small tank, they have to go through the same process?
No, there are, there are two limits, and I can't remember specifically.
That's fine, that's why I thought, because of the size of the tanks, probably.
Yeah, it's the size of the storage, and that triggers both the land license process.
Okay, you may answer my question, thanks.
Absolutely, yeah, I think 10,000 is the magic number, but it may be different for the two different pieces.
Yeah.
And did you say that the fire department had a problem with something with it?
They reviewed the plan, and I definitely wouldn't qualify it as problems, but in understanding what their strategy would be to attack a fire at this location, there were some improvements that are gonna make the site a lot safer in terms of providing backup water sources and more efficient means of getting water on the tanks. Essentially, the goal is to keep the tanks cool if there is a fire somewhere else on the site, so that it doesn't create an issue with them, which is fascinating from a technical standpoint of how they're gonna deal with that.
Now, I'm trying to remember now, is propane and natural gas, do they both sink to the bottom, or are they different from one to the other?
You're asking the wrong kind of engineer to go on record with the answer to that question.
Yeah, okay, just curious, I thought, in my mind somewhere, I thought that they were different, so.
Yeah, I, you know, I can say that the design, and we've been working with a couple of different consultants on it, meets all the requirements of NFPA 58, which is the code that governs this sort of storage.
Is there other type of fuel on the site, other than propane?
There is an existing natural gas connection, and so there, the reason that we need to do the propane is because of the natural gas moratorium, we're not allowed to increase the import of natural gas over what the site is currently using.
There's natural gas on that road?
Not, it actually comes off Child's Cross Road through the wetland area in the back and into the back corner.
Really?
Greenhouse, yeah. About the worst spot on the site it could be for us, but that's where it is.
They must have brought it in originally for the greenhouses when they put them up.
Must have been, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it certainly isn't anywhere near any of the older buildings.
Yeah.
And so the idea is to continue to use the amount of natural gas that we're allowed to, and then supplement the remainder with propane.
So, so last month, we, or, yeah, August, we said we want to do a public hearing for the stormwater, but not a new site plan.
We've always been there, so.
And I'm just, so I just wanna...
Okay.
We, maybe we can take that up again, since three of you weren't there, and the one that was here isn't here. So we looked at them, so actually, so I just passed them out, so I think that's one of, that's what we want to determine right now and then set the dates.
Setting dates, this sounds, sounds great to me.
That's what I think we need to do, is there anything else that you think we need to do?
Do you have any idea when the selectmen will be doing their open meeting?
I do not, I know that there is, I believe, a 14-day advertising period for them, the same as it is with the planning boards, but I don't have their schedule memorized.
Because we did vote to try to get it with them, I don't know if we need, do we need to revote it or something?
So you guys felt that we needed to look at the stormwater again?
Yeah, you know, part of it is, is, so my notes, the new entrance and the exit and things, but it's consolidating parking spaces, demolish a barn, reduce the size of the new building, but some of the slopes seem to be changing.
Yeah, I mean, the...
We wanted the peer review to look at them.
The biggest point of concern was that because we shrunk the size of that new building, we also shrunk the size of the stormwater basin that's managing the runoff from that roof, so I think that the goal of the board was to just make sure that got reviewed and is correct from an engineering standpoint.
And then, of course, you moved in the septic tank system somewhere.
Correct.
And that doesn't, that didn't anything do with the stormwater, but...
Right, it does change the plan, though.
But it does, yeah.
So the impervious area changed, so that's why you're changing?
It did, yes, and that's the table that I provided with all those calculations.
Those tanks gotta be pretty good size, I was wondering how that would come into play, but after you, what you said, I'm sure they're not gonna mount the space that you freed up.
Right, and, you know, below them, there'll be a couple of piers that they sit on, but we'll put us down.
Are they tall tanks or long tanks?
I mean, they're, they're long, yeah, 60, 65 feet.
You're not gonna be able to, if they float, they're just gonna go?
Pardon?
You're not gonna strap them down so they don't float?
Right, so they will be, so there are two concrete footings that come up, and then the tank has welded saddles on it that will bolt down to...
Right, if the river comes up.
Oh.
They're going down the river.
With the size of the footings that we have to put on, the tank itself, actually, surprisingly, is almost enough weight to balance out the buoyancy, and then you add those concrete footings on there, yeah, that, they'll stay, it won't be a good day, but they'll, they'll stay put.
That's a good point, because that's what happened to a lot of tanks, if they were empty.
A lot of, a lot of those 500 gallon tanks just went...
Right, yeah, the walls on, and I was looking at the weight itself when we were considering whether we'd go underground, in which case, that was an even bigger concern there, yeah, and it's, the weight of the tank almost by itself is enough to hold it down. Yeah.
You know how much it weighs, just out of curiosity?
A lot.
Okay, that's all right.
I like that.
I mean, between 50 and 100,000, I think, pounds, but...
Reducing parking, did you say?
Parking spaces are the same, the, because we're demolishing that barn in the front, we're able to rationalize the parking lot a little better, so it's a little more efficient.
It's more efficient, yeah, changing it.
So here's what he hinted at last time, when he actually says that hard scape, you know, is actually being reduced by 5,000 square feet, but part of that is the propane tanks, and you're not counting that as hard space, hard scape?
Right, because we're not paving underneath it, I mean, it's not grass, but it's, but in the stormwater modeling, we account for that space differently than we do grass, it produces more runoff than grass, but not as much as pavement.
More runoff than grass.
Right.
All right, so I'm still good, I don't, again, I don't think enough things changed on the site plan to require a whole other review there, but, and then some of these issues will come up under the stormwater review anyway. So I think we could just schedule ours for next month, and, but maybe in the next couple of days or so, if we learn, do you know anything else about the select board's process?
Yeah, do you want to make a motion to accept Weston and Sampson as the peer review?
Yeah, we did that last month.
You did that, okay.
And again...
That's because they did the original.
They did the original.
Okay.
Original site plan.
Fine.
So that's done, so now it's a matter of setting, so if they got this last week or the other day, so we have to just tell them to start, so they might need, well, we need at least the two weeks to post.
I would think.
They need a couple of weeks, so normally, we would just do it at our next meeting, actually, our next meeting might be less than two weeks, though, because we want to get back on the first Monday schedule.
Yes.
It'll be three weeks from tonight, on the 7th.
Oh, so that...
I guess it's, it's up to the, it's up to the administrators whether they, that's enough time to advertise, I suppose.
October 7th is in three weeks?
Correct.
Do you guys, are you available to meet on that?
Well, that's what he's saying, that's our next scheduled meeting, so we would prefer to have it...
Okay, so you have a set schedule, first Monday of every...
First Monday of every month, and we would prefer to keep it that way.
That's, that's enough time to advertise.
And there's no holiday?
Well, there'll be, there'll be the Monday after that, but not, not that.
Columbus Day is the other Monday.
Yeah, Columbus Day is the 14th, yeah. Oh, good.
And it's also Indigenous Peoples' Day, according to this.
Yes. All right, so, yeah, so I think that usually we can post within a day or two, yeah, so that gives us the two weeks. And at this point, I think we just gotta let the select board do their, their thing, unless, I mean, we're there and they could...
And I'm coming back for Conservation Commission the two days before that, anyway, so.
All right.
Just like we did over the winter.
If they wanted to schedule it on the 7th as well.
You're scheduled for CC on the 5th?
We expect to be, yeah, on the, no, I said two days, that was, that was an exaggeration, October 3rd, I think, is their next meeting.
About this?
Again, small changes in the buffer zone, well, it's, it's complicated.
All right, but sometimes they impact the stormwater plan, too, but we'll hear from them.
Right, it's, yeah, it's nothing to do with any of the stormwater devices, so, I try to make it quick, in the front of the site, because there's a perennial stream across the street, there is riverfront zone, we had proposed utilities to run within the driveway, in which case that activity is exempt from the Wetlands Protection Act, we don't have to ask permission to do it because it's within existing pavement, and now, because of some congestions in, in the driveway, and also coming to terms with how many conduits need to be run for the primary electric service, and also talking with the water department, we've moved that water connection out into the lawn area of what was previously 196 Mill Village Road, and now that work, because it's vegetated land, even though it's lawn, is no longer exempt from the Wetlands Protection Act, it's still what's called a limited project, which, which is small impact, but we do need to get official approval that we're allowed...
Is it covered under a general permit?
This is under a notice of intent through the Conservation Commission, and we already have a notice of intent, and DEP's advised...
Is that adjacent residential lot privately owned, or do you own it? Does the applicant own it?
It's, it's been merged onto the same lot.
Okay.
Actually, the residences on both sides of the driveway have been merged into this lot, but that was actually a condition of our approval.
Got it.
Complicated zoning background in that.
It's a complicated piece of background.
It is. Gives me something to do.
Well, and this is, this is, well, it's a substantive change in some ways, it's not, the footprint is more or less the same.
Right, the use is the same, the access is generally the same.
The access is...
I just say, because we've rearranged the parking lot.
Right, right.
We shoved all the parking over to one end, and children's on the middle of the side, and a lot of good benefits, but from 30,000 feet in terms of the numbers, it's a little wider for trusses.
Yeah, yeah.
And actually, the last time, your security guy was here, and he liked the new configuration at the entrance.
Correct.
Which our police like, too, so.
Right.
That's great.
Yeah, that guardhouse gives the guard the opportunity to speak with the driver of the incoming vehicle without letting them in the fence, because there's a fence between the guard and the incoming vehicle, and it allows them to speak with the exiting vehicle before they leave, it's, I can't take credit for it, so I'll say it was a clever layout.
Chris, I have a question.
Yes.
The use, and this is just for my personal knowledge, really, thank you for taking the time to let me do this, but the use is for cultivation only?
Correct.
All right, so there's no production of any type of product?
No.
Other than growing it?
Right, it's essentially the activities that can be done under the cultivation license as opposed to the manufacturing license.
Right, okay.
Through CCC, I believe, is what it qualifies as.
And they're all in, they're all in...
But they're gonna process them.
Hot dogs, they're...
Well, that's, the word process is funny, it fits under cultivation, minimal.
Right, they're, they're gonna cut the plants, and there's trim and dry and ship them up.
Not manufacturing.
They're also not making edibles, oils, or anything like that.
Correct.
You want something else?
No, what was this gentleman's name back here, I was just curious?
My name's Alex.
Hey, Alex.
Alex.
And you're with the...
He's with us.
He's with us.
He's with us.
He's on our, he's on our team.
Oh, that's right, you're, yeah, okay, I was just trying to put it down as a guest. What was your last name, Alex?
Well, no, he doesn't really have to report into himself.
He doesn't, okay, all right, good question.
People can be free to come and sit and listen and don't have to be, we don't have to know who they are, we don't have to take their picture, and it's really, it's democracy that we have, so just starting.
No problem, no problem.
We used to have, hey, let's move on, so, so we'll set a public hearing of October 7th for the stormwater.
At what time?
So that's a motion.
At what time?
Seven o'clock.
Okay.
7:00 PM?
Seven o'clock.
Is that good, any discussion?
Nope.
Who made the motion again, sorry?
John.
I seem to have motions to move.
And then Max seconded it.
Any other discussion?
Kind of on my...
All those in favor? I oppose abstain. You on the 7th, and if, well, if we can follow up with Sampson, Weston, to see if they need something, they need official things from the town, sometimes I talk to them, but if you can talk to them, and I guess we do want an estimate from them, but we heard you say, move on, so.
So is there an escrow posting that happens for the payment, or is it just billable?
Normally, there's an escrow, so we'd like to get an estimate from them, and then we'll bill Berkshire Design, I guess.
We just don't sign their plans.
Yes, we've been paying everything ourselves.
Until it's paid up.
Yeah.
But you do take security, you've been paying it directly?
Yes, we've been paying.
And again, this is because it's a revision, and we're all been working together, normally we do get the deposit first and then ask them to do the work.
No problem.
Good, see you in a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Thanks. All right, so actually, so this is a time we'd like, I'm skipping down to eight, discussion of planning board function, member responsibilities, participation, internal communication, general ops, assistance, funding.
Could I have 30 seconds?
Is this have anything to do with what's on the...
Number seven.
It has everything to do with it.
Well, I think it's number seven, right?
As you know, last time I was here, as you know, Sunsmash, I'm Richard Evans, Council for Sunsmash, they would like to be able to do a product manufacturer, we've had this discussion a couple of times.
This is gonna be on the agenda after this, next...
And, and last time I was here, I suggested that we would draft, redraft the zoning by law to take care of that and some other odds and ends, I've done that, I've circulated, I've brought you copies tonight, I would like to leave them with you for your, your perusal, get back to me with any changes, it's my proposal that I'm gonna file these with the selectman on the 25th, and ask him to refer it to you then for formal hearing and so forth, but between now and then, I welcome any tweaks or changes that you think are appropriate. are appropriate. I have my 30 seconds.
Excellent, so you leave it here, so there was, while you're here, let me just ask, so there was a potential miscommunication at the select board, who you spoke to, I guess, since our last meeting, and they might have thought these were like, sort of ready to go, or something, and so I informed them that, no, we had asked for your input, because you know the subject, but that we're going to do a public hearing, and we're going to go through some steps, before they need to be reviewed by any attorney or anything like that, so, so that's where we're at, is that now it's, so the select board, I think, understands that, so it's back to the planning board, because we're the zoning, we're in charge of the zoning.
Well, you'll hold the public, I mean, it's, I'll submit it to the select board,
and they refer it to you, then you hold the public hearing.
Well, it's already, we started the process, we want to, we want to change the marijuana bylaws.
Right.
We said that, and you said you could help, and we said, great.
Yeah, and that's why...
Right, so we've started the process, so the select board might refer it, they might not, we're going to continue with the process, and so your notes are very well welcomed.
Good.
Okay.
I welcome your comments, thank you so much, and thanks for letting me interrupt.
Thank you.
Thank you, James.
All right. What did, he gave us two different, it's not enough.
Two, there's one stapled and one not stapled.
Oh, this is a one pager?
One is a one pager, and the other is more...
The campuses?
Thank you.
All right, so now, as we get in, as we start to discuss the internal workings of the planning board, I'd like to ask our wonderful town administration staff to join us for this discussion. Diana, thank you both for staying late tonight, and being with us.
Thanks for everything you do.
Yeah, thank you for your service, really.
So we have some, some stuff just at the planning board, that, some of which came up, because I was kind of out of touch a lot the past month, and I'd realized that a lot of emails come to me, and sometimes they don't go, if I don't pay attention to them, they don't go beyond, so we're going to, so we want to kind of establish more of a, an order here, who does what, and stuff, but a lot of that definitely has to do with what the town staff can do, too, and as part of this discussion, I believe our Priscilla is changing, I don't know if you could tell us sort of the dates on that, and the plans for that, because she has been sort of our main contact in a lot of ways, so.
Yes, let me, so can I just take a second to summarize what we've, so we have made a presentation to the select board and the finance committee at this point, in terms of some of this information, so I would just share that with you at this time, so we went in, in front of the finance committee, we have a special town meeting coming up on September 30th, so that warrant has been posted, and on that warrant, we have some articles, we had asked for money for the select board staffing, we've also asked for money to be put into the planning board account, back into your planning board budget, where it used to be under planning services, you had a line in previous years that had been funded about $7,000 or $8,000, so we've asked for that $7,500 to be put back in to your budget, to be used for, like contracted services, like you were using Pat Smith, or you could use another planner for services, or even if you needed to use legal support services at the front end, you know, of things, any, we, it's not going to be, it's going to be in your budget, but it's just going to be support services for you, however you need to use those, so we've, I've spoken to Peggy Sloan at the, at the COG, and they're still in the process of hiring their land use planner, so they don't have a replacement yet for Pat to be able to offer you, but she did say that, you know, they would support that effort if, if and when somebody becomes available, so I told them we would, we would do that, but in the meantime, again, there's other planners available you could use, or other support, so, and then in addition to that, we'd asked for more money in the inspections budget, which is also your support staff, so that's Priscilla's position, currently, Priscilla's been doing Conservation Commission, she's been supporting you, mostly on the front end, in terms of doing some scheduling, and some, creating your agendas, and putting your materials together, not so much, it seems, on the back end, where writing your decisions, recording decisions, you know, doing the minutes, of course, you do those things, so it seems like some of those things are where the gap is now remaining, where Pat Smith has left, and, you know, we, of course, we've had a few marijuana decisions, we've had a couple solar decisions, and, you know, we've had some, some challenges in getting those completed and filed, so we recognize we need some support there, so, and in addition to that, that position also does some of the work for the Board of Health, but very minimal amount, most of that work is done in our office by, by our Pat in here, so what we've asked is for more money in that position, it's currently a grade three position, we'd like to see it be a grade four position, we've asked for additional funds to be put into that position, so we can hire somebody that has all of those, has building and land use support, would still support zoning, the inspections functions, and then really work along with Mike, Mike will be, you know, will work in the administrative office and support sort of the, the integration between the administration and land use functions, and economic development, and all those things we've talked about, and would really like to, to support and move forward with, but also he'll be the, the person really overseeing the commissioner, and the, this position, and the zoning, and sort of how they all connect in the con con, so he'll kind of be the, I see as sort of the liaison between, you know, all that, but that person will be the front, you know, the front end person, similar to how Priscilla is, when the people walk in the door, that person will still be sitting there, taking building, zoning, planning applications.
How many hours did you...
It's a full time, we're asking for it to be a full time, so, currently, so part of the money is to make it a full time position, because right now, we'd only budgeted for about, I think, a little, it's, we usually budget for 2096, and I think we budget for 1900, so we want to bring it right up to the, to the full time, almost 2100 hours, which is the regular nearly forty, you know, forty.
I'm just curious, now, I think I'm hearing that Priscilla's leaving?
Oh, yes, yes.
That's the piece that's missing here.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
That's okay, I figured that, it sounds like...
I thought we heard that at the last meeting, but maybe we didn't...
No, 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 this is the first time I heard about it, so that's okay, I got the idea from everything, there was like this little hole in the middle of the whole conversation that was missing.
Yeah, so Priscilla has given her notice, and she's supposed to be leaving this Friday, which I understand she is, but she's agreed to come back, we've got the ad out, we did go ahead and get the ad out.
Two more weeks.
Two more weeks, excuse me, 27, so she'll be here for a couple more weeks, and we do have the ad out, we may, you know, we hope to get someone, there may not be a lot of overlap, but she's agreed to come back and, and help, you know, train that person.
In the meantime, I'll support your activity.
All right, so like this, I mean, this posting of the public hearing, that's, she used to help with that?
Yeah, I'll make sure that, that stuff gets...
So she's the front end for the, the Board of Health, the...
No, she's the, currently the inspections, zoning.
Inspections, okay, inspections.
Yep, and actually, excuse me, not the zoning, that's Pat, the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board.
Just the Conservation Commission and Planning Board?
Yes, and inspections.
Not inspections, okay.
And, and inspections, and inspections.
And the zoning.
Not zoning, zoning is, zoning goes into Pat, I believe.
Okay, so it's inspections, say it one more time.
Inspections.
Concom and Planning Board.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, so, anyway, that, so that description, you know, so it's a little bit fragmented, so we're trying to bring some of that in, into place, we are going to, because the select board is the Board of Health, the idea is to sort of, you know, move that off into this office entirely, as much as we can, and keep this office land use, zoning, you know, building functions, which are all coalesced, really, into the, you know, they all work together.
Could you, I just realized, also give us an update on the building inspector?
Yes, so we have, so we have a, a new building commissioner, and he has, he started July 1st, and he's been in place now for three months, and he's now up to full time, he was, he had worked his way up, but now he's full time, he's been doing a wonderful job.
That's his name again?
His name is Robert Walden.
Goes by Bob.
Goes by Bob, and he's been working, Mike's been working with, with Bob a lot, so, you know, he's also, you know, working and helping with some, some of those things out in the field, and, you know, certainly there's issues, I know you guys have talked about changing bylaws, and, you know, we've got some of those on the, in the hopper, in terms of the MVP program, we're working with Chris Curtis, you know, he's still working on those, trying to support you, you know, in that respect.
Right, I forget where we're at with that.
I know.
Ballot's ready to go.
Yeah, so I believe you have two, we have the floodplain bylaws, I think, that are ready to go, and then the green development are still need your...
Well, he was running out of money at the last we heard.
So we actually have on the warrant, on the special town meeting warrant, we have another contract for, we, well, actually, excuse me, we pulled that off the warrant, the finance committee has agreed to give us $3,500 from the reserve fund, so that we can have Chris Curtis do grant application services for the next MVP round, but also he'll be buttoning up the planning work that he's done with you on the MVP two round, which we need to finish.
And where we are with that is, we just, we need to start the public hearing, isn't that, aren't we at that point?
Yes, I believe so, well, I think you did one, did you do the floodplain public hearing, I feel like one of them, you did a public hearing.
Yeah, we did the full public hearing for the...
You did, the floodplain's ready to go to, I think, ready to go to town meeting.
Yeah, I've got some concerns on some of that wording in that, because we asked, like, smaller brooks impacts and stuff, and I just saw it on where Blacksmith Brook flooded that, those businesses there, and it would impact those businesses, Old Deerfield, so I have some concerns about some of the wording in, how it would affect those pre-existing buildings.
So...
We haven't seen the revisions.
Yeah, I think that's where we are.
Okay, so you're not, okay, so you're not...
Exactly, and I know you brought up a lot of concerns.
I think that's, because I think that actually, some of what we've done is, is very appropriate to those, those pre-existing buildings, like, they'll be fine, it's what they're going to do with those buildings, that's somewhere we've put some restrictions on.
Yeah, but they're already there, and some of, make a big difference how they add on, if they do add on, or whatever, so...
Right, so, but that's, that's where, we put some restrictions on, that's what you said, we put some restrictions on, so the question is, what we didn't have at that point was the map, weren't we still working?
Yeah, and the map, you know, it's...
That's what I thought, we were kind of stuck on a map.
And, and then the map, you know, they're saying it's going to get worse, and I've lived by the river my whole life, and I haven't seen flooding, you know, as bad, I don't know, Irene, with the Deerfield River, that was an exception, but you don't see the river come up, I don't know if they put more flood control in, so we don't have as big an impact, I don't know.
All right, we're going, we're going off target.
No, but I'm just saying, I have some concerns about that before we go to vote on.
So, so I think...
I think one important thing, too, is, I'm sorry, Diana.
Oh, go ahead.
FEMA hasn't updated their flood insurance map.
That's what we're talking about.
1980.
That's what we're talking about.
Which is, they should, I will work with the federal government to see where they are, and that, they've done, on the east coast, they've done the FEMA insurance map update, and it's coming up into this area now, I think they are studying it, but for, it's been 40 years, where, once those maps get, get updated, and people incur the cost of insurance, I think that'll protect a lot of the development going in and encroaching into those areas, I mean, that's essential, that, really what drives floodplain everywhere is insurance, in FEMA, and that map, and I was surprised that it's been so long.
And they're in the process of working on those, they, they had a draft last year, and I think Chris Curtis is, I think he looked at some of those, we actually had a draft in there, in one of, one of the areas, Mike, not, there's a couple different areas, because we're between two rivers.
Right.
One of the, what, river shed, the floodplain area, they did.
So if you could...
So we'll, we'll get, what we need, what we'll do is, we'll get a status update on where you're at with your bylaw revisions.
June 25th, we had a public hearing, opposed amendments in the floodplain district, and you're right, I don't see that we approved it, so I think we must have continued it.
I think we did.
Okay, all right, so we'll pick...
Yeah, there's some revisions, like Max said, we haven't seen those revisions.
Okay, so we'll get back, I'm sure Chris is, is prepared to come back to...
Has he drafted those?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, he's kind of...
Yeah, so we'll make sure, because he is a consultant working on those things, so.
All right.
Okay, so, let's see, so I touched on the planning board, I touched on the staffing, so we, so we're proposing to add, to make that position full time, and to add it, add additional compensation, so that we can have it be a higher grade, and we have drafted a job description, which now we have a full complement of planning board members, I mean, excuse me, personnel board members, we will go back, you know, we'll go in front of them to grade the position, but in the meantime, the board had agreed that we should move ahead, because we don't need to leave, you know, a gap without Priscilla being here, so we're going to proceed in that respect.
I've got a question to ask the board, at one time, did we have, like, somebody from the town staff come in and take minutes and stuff?
Sure.
That's what I thought we did, did this person do this?
Well, that's going to be our next question, it's like, so what level of services, and maybe, are we ready to talk about that yet, or...
So, I would like to talk a little bit, too, about that, just in terms of, you know, certainly what Max said, when you, you know, asked about Mike and the involvement in hiring the position, you know, since I've been here at least, you know, a year, I have been working with John pretty closely, I think, on trying to get some support for the planning board, and I have gone in front of the finance committee, I don't, maybe three or four times to that end, and each time, you know, I, I pretty much get told, I don't know how to really frame it, but I'm not getting a lot of support, where's the money going to come from, you know, just, just a lot of not, you know, it's not very supportive, so I think this time, the planning board still asks those questions, they would like to have you come to their meeting next week, if you can, or some representation of the board, their meeting next Thursday, to go over the warrant, it would be really helpful if we could get, you know, some feedback from you, if you think it's important to have, you know, staffing, and what level of staffing, because that's, that's a big piece of it, and then, the other piece is, it is on the warrant, so I think the select board is certainly committed to trying to get the support, you know, getting it to town meeting.
So, why are we going to, we generate revenue through fees, and then we got to go ask permission to spend our fee money?
So there's two...
Yes.
Two different things going, well, but there is two different things that I think we should talk about, yeah.
Yes, yeah, yeah, you, so you do...
Yeah, so you're not an autonomous board, you're, and I don't mean to diminish anything, and if I talk out of line, please let me know, but you're volunteers, with very capable backgrounds, I'm sure, but your decisions are advisory, so that's really the role, I would think you play in staff decisions and things like that, not your decisions on land use matters, or anything like that, that's your final vote, but as far as staffing in the town, typically, that is held to the Board of Selectment.
Well, maybe you should explain, yeah, I, I, my question is, explain how it stands in the hierarchy, because there's only two elected boards in the town of Deerfield.
Three.
There's only two, what's the third one?
Assessors.
That's not a board.
What's the second one?
Is that a board?
Board of Assessors.
Okay, so then this, so then this is three, but I, I didn't realize that there was a pecking order amongst those three elected boards, if you're on the Conservation Commission, you're under the Selectment, if you're in the zoning appeals, you're under the Selectment, if you're onto these other board, these other committees, then you're under the Selectment.
Right.
And as far as I understood, is we were an elected board that was not under the Selectment, am I mistaken there?
No, I'm sorry, however, no, I misstated that.
But I guess, right, we should back up, he's talking about staffing, and I just wanted to jump back to sort of how our money flows, so we do generate some, some fees, and then we also have that revolving fund.
Right, but it's just, we always got our head, we always got to go beg.
Well, actually, in the past, I think, starting three or four years ago, we actually knocked down, we used to get $10,000 in the budget, and we didn't use it, because most of our work is done with that revolving fund, or, like, peer review is paid directly by the applicant, so we didn't have that many expenses, so when, when everybody wants to cut budgets, we said, you know, we have them in use an hour, so we cut it down, but that's because Priscilla and other staff is paid out of another budget, so none of our money Priscilla and other staff is paid out of another budget. So none of our money went to pay them.
Right.
So we were kind of getting some services without directly paying. So I think this is where, Diane, correct me if I'm wrong, now you're saying, go to the finance committee and say, it's not even necessarily coming directly to the planning board to that position, it's to fund that position fully because they help us.
Right, well, there's a couple things, there's a couple things to your point. I'm, I am asking for there to be, you used to have a contract with Pat Smith for $15,000, and set half, about half of it came from fees from peer reviews, from your actual peer reviews, and, and half came from the town. You, and I, maybe some of it came out of your revolving account.
Well, some came from the technical assistance grant that FERCOG helped get us, too.
Okay, okay.
So that was the other good thing.
Because it didn't seem like, I mean, certainly in the couple of years that I've been here, the accountant had said that your fees, you know, weren't, weren't covering that. So I, your fees may cover it, I mean, you do have that revolving fund, and it is to, to spend to support your administration and your work, but if, there is a time when it doesn't. And we need to get better on the administrative front end in getting those fees, in calculating those fees. You know, we've had trouble in the last year getting those, even getting the peer review money timely and getting that. So we, we have to do better on that. So that's all the administrative, you know, work.
And I have to apologize, I didn't realize you were an elected board. I'm sorry, I misstated.
Ooh, don't forget that.
Yeah.
Forget it, it's a quiz, how many are there in town?
I saw Max looking at me.
One?
But as far as, and, and we, so I just want to say to.
I was having flashbacks of burning trivia.
Yeah.
To your point though, about the minutes, and, and to what I was, what my point to say to you about the finance committee and my continued, you know, approach to them and trying to get you administrative support, and I think Mike is alluding to this as well, is that you're volunteers, and you're doing an incredibly onerous job for this community. And in that, this last year alone, you have had so many applications, complex applications from, from a large corporation to marijuana, to solar, to, you know, and then all these little things as well. So it's clear to us as the professional administrative people here on a day-to-day basis that you need support. And so we want to get you that support. We want your input, of course, on what that support should be, but, but I need your help to, to the end to say, we need it, we need that support to get that little bit of money. We're talking $14,000 or $7,000. We're not talking, you know, a lot of money in the big scheme of things to support the work that you do, which is really important, needs to be done.
So the position we're talking about, who actually supervises that person?
So, right now, the job description says that it's under the administrative direction of the assistant, the building commissioner, and I think the planning board, is that correct? Does it say the planning board, or something to that effect? It, it basically says all three. We're a little concerned about that, because it's difficult for one staff person to be responsive to a multitude of that.
Well, right, and that's where I want, why I raise the question.
So, so we believe that mostly, you know, the way I, we envisioned it when we created the assistant planning official position, was that it would really be the assistant position. That, that person would make sure there's communication between that, the staff person, the commissioner, yourselves, the inspectors, the board of health, the CONCOM, the zoning.
Well, just, just a little bit of history. We had, can I, can I just say?
No, because he was in the middle of a discussion, so.
She works out of the building inspector's office.
Right.
And so, you know, you know, okay, do this, do this, and maybe we get pushed to the side.
Well, that, that office is consolidated to a point where all the records for your planning goes in there.
No, I understand, but I just wonder how you delegate hours and who oversees that. And obviously, maybe we have a slow month or a busy month, and it's going to bounce around. I, I get that.
I think that for, for a small town of about five to seven thousand people, one person that is qualified can achieve the, the function and role of supporting this board, with me and Diana's help, of course, supporting the zoning hearing board and the CONCOM. And then the, every day, like, you need someone there just for customer service.
No, I, I.
Right? And, and most of the time, for the, the applications that come in, for the planning board, or maybe a complicated zoning hearing board application, a pre-meeting with staff is very helpful. And that's where I think the, the extra money for a professional planner to review this stuff and give you guys a memo, right, before the meeting, where you have to contemplate these things, that just draws out, here's the deal. This is what it's asking for, this is what the existing conditions are, the proposed, and then you'll have the neighborhood come out, of course, and, and decide as a board on how you want to deal with that. But you need, you need preparation.
Some of my concern was, like you said, that, and I, we all live in town, we all pay taxes, no one wants to see them go up, but obviously you've got to justify the finance for why you're going to do it. And if there's, you know, work isn't getting done, I guess that's how you do it. That's why I asked who supervised, that maybe that's a way of trying to get some funds.
Well, let me, I, I mean, I would say too, Roger, part of the, and what I said to the finance committee when they say, where's the money coming from? I mean, we have the way that we do our taxation here in Deerfield is very, is, is gotten so that we're very conservative, and we have done things so that we can generate, or we end up in, in, because of that conservative nature, generating over a million dollars in free cash. And we've been doing that for now over a decade, year over year over year, maybe not a million every year.
So we must have like millions of dollars in the bank, huh?
Well, you know, you do, you do use some of that money.
You have a robust savings account.
You do have robust capital and savings, which is an excellent position to be at, and you have very low debt service. So you're in a great position. But my point is, some of that money, and Mike has made excellent succinct points in other meetings, that that money was returned by our office for at least the last three or four years because the office was understaffed. So we need to recapture some of that and catch up. And also, some of that is going to be in, in local receipts, just in the management of the administration of the fees, like I've said, you know, not that I'm saying we're going to do a lot of enforcement and fines, but there's, we can do enforcement. There's things that we need to do in a consistent way across the board, and we need administrative support to make those things happen.
Enforcement, we have no enforcement. Every time we put a condition on, we've always felt like, please, you know, it's like, we don't have, and we're not.
That's unacceptable.
Well, that's from past history, you can see that happening.
And it's, it is a curse of the small town, but at the same time, you'd like to know that something that we're doing, and I, I look at the sugar loaf, I don't know what's, you know, where, I'd love to check in, and I'm not dead sure, so I will check on Bob now.
And that's the kind of things that we'd like to be able to do for you, a little more pro, so you're not just like, it goes off in the ether, and you're like, oh, what happened? I don't, you know, we should be able to check back in and say, you know, this. And, and some of that's just a function of communication, and, and having enough robust staffing capacity to, to give that information back to you.
So getting back to the.
No, excuse me.
Now that you had something to say, go ahead.
I wait for him, so, I'm waiting to see, I'm waiting to see if you just go right by it and go on to something else.
I was hoping, too.
I hope you were going, yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, historically, when I first came on the board, we had a person that we paid $10,000 a year. She came in and took the notes and the minutes and did it for our group. And then that was taken away from us. And then we went to someone, and I think it might have been Priscilla, who listened to the tapes and did the minutes from the tapes.
Right.
And then all of a sudden, that was not going to happen, and that's when it went away. And since then, we've had to take our own notes here. Now, I don't understand why we can't go back a step or two here, instead of just taking, you know, I mean, if you're going to put eight to $10,000 in there that we've not been asking for and using, why can't that money be used to either have somebody listen to the tapes and do it?
You shouldn't have to take your own minutes.
I agree, I agree.
This is, but what I'm trying to get at is, we're going, we're not talking about going back to that point yet. I haven't heard that out loud.
You know what, we can though, Paul. What, you're absolutely right. With the money that you just talked about and your revolving fund, we can get somebody to do the minutes. And we should, because that's part of your decisions. Like, a lot of that information that, that contains your decisions. So absolutely, we should have somebody.
In some of those hearings, you should, you should have a sonographer, really.
Well, we have to.
For like this, the more complicated land use decisions.
We went from what you're talking about down to nothing, and basically, that's, and I don't see us going back.
Right, nothing, we got you.
Well, I know, but that's a.
No, we're, no, we're looking at adding administrative staff and adding money to the planning board, and you still have your revolving fund. So I think we can carve some of that money out for, to get your minutes done. We're doing that in our office. We've, again, we've asked for not a whole person, but just a little bit of money to carve out so that we can outsource our minutes, and it's working fabulously. And it's a very, it's a small amount of money to get the minutes done and, and, you know.
So the new person you hired, would that person go to like the conservation R meetings and take those minutes, or would there be a total different person?
Well, I.
So right now, I envision that person supporting the planning board, CONCOM, and the.
Yeah, they're going to support us, or are they going to support us at meetings in the evening?
At meetings.
Okay, so.
I'll be here, they'll be here.
And I think that's a good thing, because they'd be.
Right.
Yeah, well, I would, I would say though, I want to say something. I know, I think we would have a, an adminis, you know, the commitment is to have like, sort of like a person like Mike. I think Mike did a great job tonight in summarizing even just the A and R for you. That's the kind of service, you know, like he's saying, he had a pre-meeting, he reviewed it ahead of time. I don't know, I don't know if we can commit the administrative person to be at all of those meetings. We might have to do something like, you know, have them look at the tape and transcribe the minutes.
So what I was, yeah, what I was getting at, I'm sorry to interrupt, is that planning consultant, whoever that is, that's going to give you, the planning consulting, a professional planner that can give you advice, yeah, we'll have to figure out the minutes. And outsourcing them, which they do for the board of selectmen, is not that expensive. And to have someone listen to the tape and at least just transcribe what was said.
Yeah, there's two, I guess what I'm saying, Rogers, I think there's sort of two different levels of, you know, there's sort of the administrative professional to help you with the sort of planning and doing that. And then there's a person to just be clerical support, support minutes.
I think that's the person's.
So that person, we're looking at being a little bit higher level than that. We want that to be a grade four position, to be somebody day-to-day in the office that can handle things for the commissioners and look at, you know, look, give, give alerts to, to people, get the agendas going. There's going to be a lot of activities. I'm just not sure that person is also going to be transcribing minutes for all three of those boards. We'll have to consider that. But I hear what you're saying about getting your minutes done, and I think that's something we can do, you know, pretty quickly. I think, I think Pat may be doing the zoning minutes anyway. I'm not sure the zoning board is doing theirs, if Pat's doing their, doing, Pat Cole doing theirs, so we'll have to check.
All right.
Anyway.
Well, Paul's been, I just want to, having done it a couple of times, it is a pile of work. It is not easy. It removes you from the meeting. It makes you, you know, fuss about things that nobody else is really listening for, because you're listening for the big picture. It's a lot of, out-of-board work, which there is a good bit of out-of-board work, but that's a lot of out-of-board work. So my hat's off to Paul, and I do think that would be a great piece. And it's also a really important record-keeping for us.
Yes.
So, you know, ultimately, and I know I've heard Pat kind of say, I don't, we don't get the meeting notes. Well, honest to gosh, we know where they are, and we're kind of, it's like one more step, honestly, that if you think about it.
Who's currently, who writes your decisions?
Oh.
Oh, Pat did, Pat Smith did.
Pat Smith.
We haven't had one since.
Now, we're in a bind, because when we had to do them, it took a long time, it didn't get done.
And, I mean, this can get, back to the finance committee, we need to bring in an attorney to help us write the marijuana ones.
Yes, absolutely.
Which is a hell of a lot more than having somebody else.
It took, it really, it literally took like six people and an attorney, because it just is so much to get in there. And we have very robust decisions, which is wonderful, but, you know, it's a lot of information.
So, the position you're going to advertise for, or advertising for.
Yes.
Do you have a job description?
Yes, it's posted, yep.
Yes.
It'd be interesting to see what that is, you know, are, is that person going to be a, a planner, a building inspector?
No, probably not. We've asked for a minimum qualifications of an associate's degree in, in experience, which is, and again, the, the day-to-day operations of the office really is going to take up a lot of that person's time. So, being there, right? Customer service, processing permits for Bob, taking in, and just following the, the process that's in place for collecting fees, stamping things in, getting the material collected and distributed, record-keeping.
Managing the peer review, like, that's one of the things, like managing the peer review system, you know.
Exactly, it's really, it's an administrative position.
Chasing them down who haven't gone back to us.
Yes.
But you also need, I believe, professional advice.
Right.
So what you had in the past.
So that's different, that's another.
And, and that, and it's not to discount any, any experience that you all have with land use matters, but I think just having somebody.
I know, please, please don't, don't try to make me feel good.
No, 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 really, don't get me wrong. No, please, I mean, don't get me wrong. I, I just think that, that extra step of just having that extra review at your hands, and being able to read it before you get there, and stuff like that.
Can you tell me when the finance committee meeting is?
Yeah, so it's next Thursday.
The twenty-sixth.
The twenty-sixth, correct, at six o'clock, John. Thank you.
At six o'clock.
So, and Diane has asked me on other occasions that I just haven't been able to, and I, I think it is our, it's incumbent on us to show up and say, we really need this. You represent, you represent us, we appreciate that, but I think we need to be in front of them.
Yes, thank you.
That would be very important.
And, and I can tell you, it can, I mean, we just came up with all these reasons, and then the other reason is, on the backside, the liability, we do something wrong, it creates havoc and very expensive. So, for a limited amount of money, it can really be useful. And as we've seen, there were years there when we only had that.
I think that would be the biggest.
Which one?
Have more hours. I mean, it'd be pretty easy to justify, that's why I would say, who supervises person if work's not getting done because there's not enough time? Well, that's how you justify it.
Yes.
Yeah, and Priscilla's expressed frustration.
Yes.
In the hours that she's had to do things, and she just doesn't.
She's going to volunteer too.
She's part-time, so I.
She's going to volunteer too, and I think with that, you know, those are the, those situations are always difficult, because if she walks away from it, then it doesn't get done. She does it, everybody thinks, oh.
I know, she's pretty dedicated, she puts an extra time.
Yes, she has, yes. And she's, and to her credit, and I want to give a shout out to her, because she's, she has been staying, she's stayed for a while because of, you know, because of the new building commissioner, and because of your transitions and things like that. So she's really, really tried to be supportive and helpful, so we really appreciate it.
So this is fantastic. And, and again, having any town staff at our meetings is helpful, because we get stuff in the folder, but sometimes there's like a missing thing. And, and then it's like, oh, we've got to wait till the, the next day, or the next week, or the next month, and it's just close things down.
So, so what Mike, I think, is saying in the, so for now, he's going to do that. We'll get, we'll secure your money, we'll see how things work out with the COG, you know, and he'll be there to support you. But we've got, you know, he's also, like I said, he's going to coordinate that, those things, but we also have like a ton of, you know, stuff to do as well, so.
But if, next time you talk to Peggy, just ask her about that technical assistance grant, because I think two or three years, we got, they were able to kind of apply, we just have to say we're on board, and it was like ten grand or something.
Typical like, you know, having somebody to help you do the thing to do.
Who's Peggy?
That would be, she's the director.
Peggy Sloan at the, at the FERCOG.
One of the things too, so, so I'd like to, as we transition with staff, I just said to Mike, I think we need to get, you know, certainly, with you, remember how you and Pat and I think, I can't remember if it was Connor, but we had a meeting, that was really helpful. But we should just make sure, we have a whole list of, you know, where you're at, we've got to get on top of where you're at with your bylaws. We should, there's other bylaws, John, remember, you guys were looking at?
We got them on this.
Okay, so.
And some of these go back to that kind of temporary building inspector we had, who actually wrote up some good things about accessory apartments, and we now have to go back and revisit that.
And the reason I'm mentioning is, because Bob is, I find, I would expect running into some things that he's identified, and, and him and Mike have been talking about that, so.
So I think if we get, Bob and you at a meeting, we could crank out, we could get through some of these things that we've been talking about for a long time.
Yes.
And then, and then they have to fit into our current bylaws. We're not trying to create new ones as much as revise the ones that we have.
Yes.
Before you leave, get my card, so that you have my information. I'll give you my cell phone number too, so that if you can contact me in the interim while we're transitioning, please, please reach out to me.
All right, well.
So we're trying to make progress here for you guys and support you.
So, actually, why don't you stay for a couple more minutes if you can, because so our, our, so Anne Mary is our newest member. And I'm, well, let's not say who's the oldest, but who's?
Absent, is there someone absent?
Kip.
Kip.
Kip Kamalso.
So.
And there must be another.
So I've been the chair for a long time. We have a chair, a vice chair, which is now Rachel, and a clerk. I think those are the only three kind of positions. And so And so what we've been doing, and there's a lot of emails between staff, often it's between me and you guys, but I put these two on it to CC them. So there's always someone else on the board, but we don't wanna add all seven of us, because that becomes a, sort of that public nuisance, whatever you call it, thing.
Right.
Meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so the question is, um, well, we wanna get Ann Marie more, more involved too, she doesn't, I don't know if that's what she was hoping.
Well, one of the things is that, that there are, there are council workshops too, that we, Paul's sent me to one, that they're very helpful.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there is training opportunities available.
There's training, but what I'd like also is that all of us kinda have some responsibilities.
Okay.
That's kinda where I'm going with this.
Mm-hmm.
Because a lot of times it, it, it falls to the chair, and every year when they elect me chair, I say, I'm happy to facilitate the meetings, and even maybe prepare, prepare the agenda, but I don't wanna do everything.
Yeah.
And so, um, when there's a lot, when there's not much to do, it's an A and R, no big deal, but when there's a bunch of things going on. So I would like to see all of us kinda, kinda step up, and then if you guys know who it is, then that person can interact with you.
Right. One thing I found helpful in my experience with other planning boards is, uh, as new applications come in, not small ones, but more complicated land development and site review processes, that you elect a subcommittee of yourselves, every month it rotates that, uh, those people are assigned just to go out and look at it, right? And give a report to the rest of the board, 'cause people don't have time to go out. But I think, uh, interacting with the physical environment of where people are proposing stuff can really give you great insight into, uh, what's going on out there, so. That, it's like a site review subcommittee, whatever you wanna call it, it's not, uh, has to be a bylaw or anything like that, it's just an assignment that rotates where people can go out, look, and just write a brief email or memo to the rest of the board prior to the meeting or hearing, giving what their observations are.
We haven't done that in a long time, and we rely on maybe drive-by during the week sometime, but we don't-
We also have done that, kind of informally, like who can go, I mean, I'll walk, I'll walk the-
I know, but then we don't kinda, yeah.
Yeah.
All of us have different perspectives.
That's a thing.
So, you know what, I'll be very honest, I have mine, and they have theirs.
Oh, absolutely.
You can still look.
And, and I would ask, and I would ask that that report be completely subjective, it's just, it's not a-
Right, so that's what I'm saying, you know, just pick three people.
You mean objective?
It could be just the way they feel, you know, so, I don't know if I really like that.
Really? If we look at a piece of land, do you think we'd look at it differently?
If three of you went out, you couldn't write as, an objective report, the three of you, three people?
And you're just commenting on the closeness of neighbors, the-
Exactly.
The distance from, right, but the, it's, it can be an objective factual report, and just keep your mind to that, and not put in your, like, I know that dude, he's not gonna like it, whatever.
Right, that shouldn't go in the report, yeah, which sometimes it does.
Is, does April six, twenty-ten zoning map appear? I wouldn't be surprised if it was.
Well, no, because we've had a couple overlay districts since then.
Oh, yeah, we did.
I don't think, I don't think like RA has changed or things like that, but I know-
Yeah, so one thing we're working on with our intern, Alex.
Alex?
Is, uh, an update to the zoning map that lists the dates where overlay was enacted, and all these different changes took place, so as you see the color coding, you know exactly, and the hashing, what the date is on it. So there's a, there's a historical narrative about how the zoning changed and when, and that's pretty easy for us to research, uh, to just, so that when you look at the zoning map, and he's looking at it, two thousand and ten, no, but there's these revisions that happened over the years, and it's just a simple date next to the, the color-coded zone or overlay district that'll inform you about how the zoning changed over the years.
Does that, does that have the ex, the, uh, you know, the expedited-
Expedited, no.
EBD, yes. So that's, so that's, so that's after ten, I think.
No, no, expedited district is not the marijuana overlay.
No, no, but I'm just trying to say, we did the expedited, uh, thing there, but that would get something up into the timeframe.
Twenty-ten, that's-
Is that what that's done in ten?
Yeah, so, and-
We've been waiting for that one, you know?
I should let you know that too, John, just, just for information purposes, since you mentioned that, Paulie, on the warrant, we do have an article to purchase back the New England Natural Bakers property. So, um, the New England Natural Bakers, um, has decided to not, um, come to Deerfield and set up their facility. So in the, uh, purchase agreement, we had right of first refusal on that, so the board had voted to exercise that right, and that was the reason why we, um, you know, rapidly called the special town meeting for September thirtieth, so that would be on there.
I kinda got that in, in mind when I saw them dumping blacktop and stockpiling materials back out there again, and without owning the property, I wondered how they were doing that.
Right.
Yeah.
And then actually, just speaking of that, I got the email about Pilot Precision Products, we've been invited to a-
Yeah, their open house, I think that's Dumont, is that Dumont?
Is that Dumont Corporation?
Yeah.
So that is a different name, so it's Dumont, yeah, all right, so that's, um, September, Monday, September twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
We were all invited to that, at, uh-
What time, John?
Four to five is a tour of the facility, five to five-thirty is a rip and cutting, with photo opportunities, so you should be there. And then six P M dinner.
Where you tuck.
Dinner.
Dinner, now I should have that.
John, you need to be careful, there's probably some big holes over there. There's one right in the middle of that lot there, where it's just sinking through, there's a big sinkhole.
So that's, all right, thanks for that update.
They probably have some furnaces also, don't they?
So, um, so Alex, I, I have read your thing, so I wanna get back to it, but, um, this is exactly what we need.
Yeah, he did a good job, it's pretty comprehensive.
He sent around this thing, it's really trying to pull it into a few pages, customer service kinda thing. He sent Rachel and me first, and then we gave input, and then it'll come out and relive this, but it's, uh, it's like for someone walking into the door, and they say, I wanna build a house, that, you, you, this is what you need to do. If you wanna build a building somewhere, this is what you have to do, in, in a language people can understand.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, and then also it says things like, sometimes when it involves zoning board and planning board, we'll try to do a joint meeting, and we've done that a couple times, that's worked. We've done some joint meetings with the CONCOM.
And with the ZBA.
And with the ZBA, so we always wanna do that when we can.
And I think also having, you know, administrative staff that is working with all of those will help to coordinate that effort.
Exactly. Excellent, so what else do we, uh, what else do we wanna talk about here?
Well, I guess the question that I had in my email was, if your your issue was that no one had called a meeting when you weren't around, so how do we do that? Who does that, who's in charge?
I did.
So I would say vice chair should be the next.
That's how come we haven't tonight?
All right.
I mean, otherwise we'd be still slipping along.
Well, I really, I missed the last meeting. Are you gonna set up a, go back to your monthly meeting?
I missed the last meeting, so I really wasn't sure, because it wasn't the date that was on the tape, and I didn't watch the whole tape, I just watched through the end.
What works best for everybody is, are Mondays at seven?
I think they were doing the first time.
The same, the same regular date of the month.
Yeah, the first Monday of every month.
We're pretty-
Why do we have it on Monday?
It's being a holiday, yeah, and then you have to change-
Why do we have it on Tuesday or Wednesday?
Yeah, and then it gets real confusing, so it happens sometimes.
Well, I know, I mean, historically, it's been Monday, and, and as people join the board, it's almost like you kinda have to expect that, I think it's almost better to-
I, I plan all my other stuff around Monday, maybe another day would be, another day would be better, I don't know.
So when a, Monday's a holiday would be-
It does throw things off.
Wednesday or Tuesday.
And that's when, that's when it usually messes things up, when, and that's what happened in September.
Okay.
And then we go to the, sometimes we go to the next Tuesday, sometimes we go to the next Monday, Roger can often make the second Monday, 'cause he's got something else, so it's, gets to be, we're gonna have a quorum. Any more? I mean, Mondays, we get, we, I mean, this is actually a good board, we usually get six or seven people, once in a while we get five, it's been very rare when we don't get a quorum.
Mondays, like you said, holidays, people go away, that's why I'm just saying, maybe Monday isn't the best day.
We can't meet on holidays.
What's that?
Right, no, that's what he's saying.
Right.
Doesn't matter.
But he says we get messed up, at least two or three times a, a year, we get messed up.
Something to do, I mean, going away, just go waste-
No, he's talking about Mondays, you know.
I'm not saying we have to do it, just think about it.
Well, you, I, yeah, who wants, think about Monday?
To me, my problem is that, that's how my, it's pinned in.
That's right.
Yeah, in fact, even going to the second Monday today, I had to dig out and organize my mom to do something else, 'cause I'm with her on the second Monday, you know, it's like, I got my Tuesday, Sunday, the, the, the-
I think the issues, we don't change it, I'm just-
I think it's the tricky part of the holidays, and we're gonna bump into the, we won't bump into it in, until December, January, yeah, and we'll bump into it for sure in, in January.
So for the rest of the year, you think, uh, October, November, December, for some?
Well, and what about, don't, don't we have finished it, yeah, okay.
And the thing is, we also have had, we've had, over the last, I will say, two years at least, we've had a couple of months every year, three months every year, well, we've had two meetings, we haven't, we haven't just stuck to that part of it.
Sometimes when you get busy, you gotta do that.
No, absolutely, and, and I'm in, I'm just saying that, that's when it's really nice, when it's Monday, 'cause at least I'm, I don't have to jig it in someplace else, that's all, it's kinda nice, it's consistent, consistent.
So it works good for you, maybe not for everybody else, I don't know, that's why I just posed the question.
All right, it works best for me, vote, Mondays?
Mondays good.
Mondays good.
Mondays good.
Mondays good?
Yep.
We'll keep it Mondays.
Seventh.
But it's good to re- review, review it once in a while.
Okay.
So next meeting, October seventh?
October seventh.
Sorry.
That's okay, so like, I think, I think we should lock them in, can we just lock them in for October, November, and December?
Sure.
Just, let's do that, and then, okay, just so, let's have those, and then if you need additional to do other stuff, but-
So let's say the first Monday of every month, sort of forever.
No, she's saying lock in the dates.
I know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the seventh, the fourth, and the-
But we should plan ahead for January, or whatever the month's where we know it's coming?
Right.
Yeah.
Because that's what we don't do good at, we don't look ahead.
Yeah, I suggest that all the town meetings be on a calendar, and if you have to reschedule them, you reschedule them, or you cancel them, and, and you need to do what you need to do.
So, Mike, ours is just always on the first Monday, unless it's changed.
So it's October seventh, November fourth?
Our next, our next meeting is gonna be October the seventh.
In December second, right.
Okay, then the next one's gonna be in November.
The fourth?
Yep.
Let's see what that is, Sunday, Monday's the fourth, so we have that, planning board.
January sixth.
There's a lovely app that tells you exactly when.
Great.
And even the sixth of January is fine, you know, so, February's good, I think it's, it's, actually, all these Mondays are looking really good.
So November the fourth.
Yeah, but then there'll be a special-
There'll be something, but it looks good for several months.
All right, we'll lock in your agenda for six months.
So we got November the fourth, and what's our December date gonna be?
First of-
The seventh.
Just a minute, just don't, don't be a bugger, don't be a bugger, just be a-
You got it, you got it?
I got it, second, December second, okay, so I got it, anybody figured it?
Every month, first month.
Who said that? Me? Oh, you don't even have email, what are you talking about? Yeah, well, I figure out what the first Monday of the month is.
Actually, that is an issue, Roger, 'cause it's-
You oughta be able to do email.
We send you emails, but it bounces back, do you get them? Do you get them?
Yeah, they have that solar-
You're just passive aggressive.
So do we have to do a mailing to you, or?
They're gonna hear that on the seventh. And then there is a solar revision for interconnection.
Second Monday.
Which they can, don't have those plans, so.
I'll call you sometimes, John, but you-
I know you do, and I'm like, how did you get my cellphone, anyway?
And so before you adjourn, I just have some, uh, order of business.
He doesn't, he doesn't want you to know.
So, Dollar General, I have an update for you, um, so I talked to Adam Costa, he's representing the town regarding the pending litigation of Dollar General's appeal to the planning board in the town for the denial, and right now it's in, uh, a negotiation kind of status, and they wanna meet within the next seven to ten days, so possibly late September, early October, and Adam has asked that two representatives of the planning board be involved in that, uh, meeting to look at some of those.
I don't know if we're supposed to talk about, are we supposed to talk about this in detail?
I'm just wondering if it's an executive session or not.
Yeah, 'cause I think we're in negotiations, so I don't know if we're supposed to talk about the details of it?
Not the details, but just, I just want two volunteers to come to a meeting.
That's all we gotta talk about.
And where is the meeting gonna be?
Uh, it'll be either here in Deerfield, or possibly, uh, in, in Worcester.
I think when we had this discussion prior, we said it should be here.
I agree, so let's just make it here.
Yeah, okay, I'll volunteer to be here.
Okay.
I volunteer.
So Rachel and Paul?
No.
No.
I'm sorry.
Did I hear Rachel or Ann Marie?
She has no card.
You have no card?
I had been, um, I've been involved with Adam, and I, I thought at one point, we said that the, the chair would try to attend these too.
It's up to you guys, just let me know, you don't have to decide now, just, I'm gonna give you my card.
I think the three people, he didn't want any more than that.
Two, actually.
He said two recently, because I know-
'Cause there's gonna be a select board member. And then the attorneys and staff.
And we should have a pre-meeting before that.
And this will be during the daytime hours, or it'll be evening hours?
I would believe it would be business hours.
Business hours, okay.
Um, I don't, I think, John, aren't we still just, um, having the initial meeting after the executive session we already had? I mean, is there, I don't think there's really been, is this still the first, right? So when you said you needed a pre-meeting, I mean, I'm, I think we had already, unless you, unless you-
Well, it's been a little while, I just wanna-
Just wanna do an, okay, yeah, you should just-
Make sure we got the update that out, that Adam has all of our, you know, this was kind of our, the issues to address, so.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right.
So, but you don't have a date, is that what you're saying?
So I don't have a date, but he asked that just for scheduling purposes only, and why I ask you tonight, um, is just that you talk among yourselves, and you, uh, put forth two names who you wanna represent you at that meeting.
So I'm, I'd like, I'd like to continue with this, um, and you said you would too?
Yeah.
And you weren't, you weren't here for that, right?
Correct.
All right, but you said you wanted to be?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right.
Adam and I had talked about it a little bit, I don't know if I'm supposed to talk about that here or not.
Well, we should, just to decide who the two people are, I mean, I, I wouldn't have thought you would be the most appropriate, 'cause you weren't here during the process, so.
Right, and that was sort of why we thought it might be a good idea, because if there are any sort of leftover feelings or whatever, that there would be a fresh set of eyes on it.
There is a- I, I think that-
And if the three's not a quorum, then I think that can be accommodated, probably.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I mean, I would not say that you'd be appropriate, um, 'cause I think, I think you need to know, we went through a lot of stuff there, and I, I just think it makes sense to have people who went through it all.
I can see your point, John, and I can see Ann Marie, Mary's also, well, like, it would be a fresh set of eyes, so it'd be like, okay, she's not, you know, impartial one way or the other, but I understand where you're coming from too, so what we went through and what we discussed, she wouldn't have that knowledge, but it would be a fresh set of eyes to look at these new conditions, so. Well, let's see if we can get the three, and-
Yeah, and then it's got a lot of it's coming, and the dates too, for, for all of us, so.
And then if it's during a business day too, that's another.
All right, are you interested?
Only if one of these two don't wanna do it.
So if it is business hours, mornings or afternoons, what's better for?
Mornings are, mornings are pretty good, but, uh, you know, depending on the day, most of the time.
I know, every day is, so.
Yeah.
Right.
And you, this, do you have certain times you could, or you couldn't, or?
I can work my schedule around it.
Yeah, 'cause this is gonna be like one, maybe two days at the most, to, to do it, that's just I understand it, right?
The initial meeting would be, just be that, it would be a couple hours.
Okay.
All right, well, that's, why don't you put Ann Marie, Paul, and me?
Okay.
And I know, I'm not sure what Kip's opinion is, but he's not here, so. Any other business not anticipated forty-eight hours ahead of time?
Good.
We've already set our date for the next meeting.
Yep.
So.
Okay, next meeting is, uh, October the seventh.
Good for an adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Mary, Anne.